Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It's February 16th. I have the prayer and pledge. Before I get into prayer, I want to make sure that I announce the names correctly. But tonight, there was a helicopter crash yesterday in Huntsville. And it was announced that both of the pilots for that helicopter are from Murfreesboro. Chief Warrant Officer Third Daniel Wadham and Chief Warrant Officer Third Danny Randolph. And so I want to make sure and include their families in our prayers tonight. Father, I thank you for this night. Lord, I thank you for the things that you've given us. I think you've given us rain that replenishes everything. Lord, that you've kept people safe through these storms. Lord, I pray for the family of the fallen soldiers in the helicopter, that you give them grace, that you give them strength. Most of all, that you give them the ability to be able to, Lord, just understand. Sometimes it's hard for us to be able to understand why things happen, but, Lord, we just have to believe. Lord, please give us the ability to make decisions tonight that are fitting to you, fitting to this city, and give us wisdom to be able to make those decisions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a Stars Award, and then I have another presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here tonight to recognize the recipients for the Stars Awards for the month of January. The purpose of the Stars Award is to recognize and reward those employees who go above and beyond their normal job duties in providing outstanding customer service and also to our internal and external customers. Often when you see this experience, the level of service out is impressive. In fact, this was a case back in January, a few weeks ago. The EMS director in Cannon County arrived on the scene of a motor vehicle accident and saw firefighters Daniel Carter and Josh Walker in action. Both firefighters have been with the city a little bit over a year. In fact, Mr. Carter completed his training in August of 2022, and Mr. Walker completed his in January of 2022. What's noticeable about this story is that the director from another county was so impressed with these gentlemen's action that he wrote a letter to our interim fire chief, Mark McCloskey, to acknowledge the fine work that he saw. Here's a brief summary of the letter from Justin Harris. He's the EMS director at Cannon County. "Chief McCloskey, we have several of your people do EMT clinical with us quite often, and it is always nice to have them. Their skills are always sharp, and their help is top-notch. The reason for the emails today is to send accommodation of two of your firefighters that rolled up on a bad motor vehicle crash this morning in our county. Around 7:45 a.m., we had a small SUV pulled out in front of a semi truck traveling 65 miles per hour on Highway 70, causing a high-speed T-bone type collision. This was a very ugly wreck with extremely critical, with an extremely critical patient. Your guys were the first people to arrive on the scene. They immediately stopped and went into action. Upon my arrival, they were assessing my crew in the back of the ambulance and did so until the patient was placed in the helicopter at the scene. Chief, their help was invaluable to the crew and the patient. It was nice to work alongside some Murfreesboro firefighters personnel again. The two men's names again are Josh Walker and Daniel Carter. You should be proud of these two for their selfless actions and great outlook they gave your department. Thank you for your time, and I'm sure you, I'll see you around sometime down the road. Counsel, for those old heads in the room, sometimes things like this makes you smile because you recognize that these individuals did exactly what they were trained to do." When I look at the leadership of the department, the fire department, including Chief McCloskey, Chief Lowe, Chief Swan, Chief Toons, they have to be proud of these young men, along with the captain as well. Firefighter Carter and Walker, if you would, please stand. Gentlemen, you make us proud to have you on our team. With that said, on behalf of the mayor, the council, and the entire Murfreesboro Fire Department, it is my honor and pleasure to recognize you as the Stars recipients for the month of January.
Mayor? And gentlemen, do y'all have some family you want to, do you have some family here you want to recognize? Sorry to put you on the spot, but I always like to recognize your family members here here.
(inaudible) Amanda.
Stand up, Amanda.
(inaudible).
So, I know these gentlemen may have not been with Murfreesboro for a long time, like a lot of our people, especially Chief, 38 years, right? Sorry, not saying you're old, but 38 years is a long, long time. But y'all share them with us, and I think the city of Murfreesboro is a family, and so it's very important that we recognize y'all and thank y'all for allowing them to work with the city. Also, I don't see him, but Battalion Chief Estes, where is, it's his birthday today. And so we'll make sure and say happy 50th birthday to Clay. Is it 50, right? And then it's also Councilwoman Everwaters, it's her 43rd birthday today.
Oh!
So... (laughing) Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate y'all.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Of all the pictures I took, someone had their eyes closed and one of them every time.
Is that me?
Was that me?
Hey, I like how you didn't call me out in front of everybody. Many of us have been watching on Thursday nights Hell's Kitchen to be able to follow one of our Murfreesboras own. And I think the cool thing about this is when I first got elected mayor 10 years ago, we had a food truck controversy that was in the city. And the D and J at the time interviewed this long-haired guy about, you know, why we should have food trucks. And, and no joke, I met with Alex the first time at the Starbucks on Memorial, and, you know, Alex was Blackman, taught at Blackman or graduated from Blackman, right? Taught at Blackman. And so Alex was so passionate about being a small business owner and some of the challenges that Alex had about finding a place to be able to practice his art, to be able to further the culinary scene in Murfreesboro. And so Alex was so passionate over a cup of coffee, talking about, you know, how we needed to work on that. And fast forward that same year, based on several of the ideas he had, we put our first food truck ordinance in, in place in the city of Murfreesboro. And so since that time, you know, you look at Five Senses, you look at Primrose, you look at The Alley, you know, all these family businesses that continue to flourish. So when we were watching, we were watching Chef Baloo on Hell's Kitchen and watching him compete with many other people, with Daphne, with Alejandro, True B, that guy, he was a, Billy, he was a disaster. But we were watching all these people, and then throughout the whole show, Alex continued to shine. And the cool thing about watching Alex is he did that with grace, he did that with humility. And so last Thursday, Alex Baloo was announced as the season 21 winner of Hell's Kitchen. And I couldn't be more proud to see someone that has been a fabric of, a part of the city of Murfreesboro that has brought meaningful change to the city of Murfreesboro. So I wanted to, on behalf of the City Council, Alex, if you'll come up.
(inaudible).
Yeah. Well, I can't give this until you go ahead and pay those right now. Chief Bowen will see you as soon as this is over with. Y'all have heard me say this before, you don't give the key to your house to anyone but family and people that you trust to be able to come to your house. And so this is a family here at the city of Murfreesboro, and so it's my pleasure, on behalf of the City Council, to present you with the key to the city, to the city of Murfreesboro.
(applause) I feel like I'm in a principal's office, about to get in trouble. This would not have been possible, obviously, without my mom and my wife Sarah and my two little crazy boys, Raya and Mason. That experience was bananas, to say the least. Gordon is amazing, but it was stressful and never had an idea that I was going to win. And when I did, it was, it was just crazy. So this, this is quite the honor. And I've lived here since I was four or five years old, so this is my home. And just thank you. I don't, this is, I don't know what to say.
Let's get a picture.
I'm not used to getting awards.
Yes, y'all get awards all the time.
Yeah.
For cooking, yeah.
It's my 43rd.
It's your 43rd.
That's good for 43.
That's right. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. You have six items on your consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion to second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business. You have planning commission recommendations. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. We have three public hearings to schedule that the planning commission recommended approval on all three of these, and we are recommending a public hearing date for all three of April the 6th. Be happy to answer any questions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, Mr. Blomley, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. All right, we'll move to on motion items. You have the presentation of the annual audit.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am...
How, how many years has this been that you've done, your team has done the audit?
I can't tell you. I'm not sure. My dad used to do it, but that's been a while. But I've been doing it a while. And we've got a 210-page report. I'm sure many people out there would like me to go through it page by page, but I'm not going to do it. Can't do it. First of all, just thanks to Jennifer Brown and her staff. They helped tremendously. This is a huge undertaking when you consider it takes some 1,800 hours of time to get through all the transactions and issue our report on this. We need a lot of help, and they do a great job, so thanks to her. Once again, the, the report is available on the website, so anybody that's interested can go out and find that on the city's website. This, the past year's report won the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. That's, that's been going on for about 20 years. That is a group out of Chicago that, that scrutinizes this report for the way it's laid out, for how it, its readability and fairness. And they issue a certificate based on what they believe is standards above the norm. So that's something for the city to be proud of. We've submitted this one to be approved for that award as well, so hopefully we, we don't expect anything but just to get it again this next year. We'll just hit the highlights. The auditor's report is right behind the tab that says independent auditor's report. It is three pages, but basically it says that the city has a clean opinion, that we feel like the, the financials are fairly stated and that our opinion says that. In city government, there are two types of presentations, and just go through this because I know some of you are fairly new to the council and it's, it's a very complex thing, but there are two presentations. One is a long-term view of the city, and what that includes is all the assets, including roads and streets, and it includes liabilities like bonds payable that are not due for 30 years. It includes all the assets of the city. And if you go behind the tab that says government-wide financials, it's on page 23. As I said, this is a long-term view of the city's financial position. And the first page on 23 is the statement of net position, which is the assets and liabilities. As I said, it includes everything in the city. The governmental activities would be the general fund, the city schools, all the activities supported by taxes. Business-type activities would be the water and sewer and the activities that are supported by fees. And the thing to point out here is the total net position at the bottom. $710 million for government activities, $472 million for business-type activities. What that indicates is the assets of the city exceed the liabilities by those amounts. And the total for citywide would be $1.1 billion in net assets, net position. And the next page is the, the statement of activities, and that shows the expenses and revenues for the year. And again, this is on a more of a business-type approach. It's not really related to the budget, but it's, it includes things like depreciation that you would normally find in a, in a business, but not in governmental. And the way it's laid out is, is the expenses of each program of the city are presented first. For instance, police total expenses for the year were $48.9 million. And then the columns to the right of that indicate what sources of revenues that were directly related to those expenses. Now, in the case of police, most of that would be supported by tax revenues, which are shown at the bottom there. And then if we turn on to page 25, the traditional presentation for a government is based on the budget year. And this is more of a short-term look at the city's financials. It only includes assets like cash that are available to pay budget expenses. It, it includes short-term liabilities that we're going to have to pay in the current budget year, so it's more of a short-term approach. But what's important there is the general fund. You'll see there in the first column, the general fund, down at the bottom, fund balance. The unassigned fund balance is $123 million. That, that unassigned indicates that it's not designated or reserved, it's, it's available for expenditures. Should also point out that that's about almost 95% of the annual expenditures of the city. So what that indicates is that if everything shut down, all the revenues shut down, there's enough in fund balance to get through a full year of expenditures. So that's, that's a pretty strong position for, for the city. The general fund detail, and I should say that detail gets more as you go back further in this report. It's, it's an overview at the front, and then it gets more detailed as you go back. So starting on 29, this shows the general fund detailed expenditures compared to the budget for the year, so, and, and the revenues. So you will see on page 37, total expenditures for the year were about $130 million. So that's, that's what, where we ended the year through June. Okay? And then just point out that starting on page 46, behind the tab that says notes to financials, there's a lot of information about the city's accounting policies in particular, information about the retirement plans available to the employees. There's a lot of information on bonds and debt and fixed assets, so there's a lot of narrative there about those, those issues. Going back further in this statistical section, which starts on page 169, this section gives a lot of information for the last 10 years. And what we can see from a lot of these reports is how the city has grown over that 10-year period. For instance, on page 173, it shows just the, the largest tax revenue sources, property taxes and sales tax for the last 10 years. And you can see from 2013, sales tax collections were $33.6 million. This past year, they were $67.4 million. So that's, shows how, how much Murfreesboro has grown over that time period. And just one other thing to point out, the single audit section, which is the last tab, what this does is, is give program by program the federal funds that the city received and what, what department those came from. As part of our audit, we have to look at federal funds, make sure they were spent in accordance with the requirements and the contracts, and issue a separate report just on the federal money. So that's, that's a big part of this report as well. Okay, that's, that's about as quick as I can make it, but I'll be glad to take any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Job?
Not at the moment, once I review it, probably.
I want to, you want to, Mr. Job, recognize, I always ask this, but recognize your, it's the same team that we, we see and have seen for a long time. You want to recognize your, your team?
And I have Suzanne Vandiver and Molly Patricus. They've been on this audit for, for several years. I won't say how many, but they, I would put them against any auditors in the state. I really would. They are, they are fantastic. It's not, I can't even take credit for hiring them, but, but they, they do a fantastic job.
The two big highlights, in my opinion, revenue was up 9.27 million more than what we had budgeted, 6.7 of that was sales tax. I think the most important number from a financial side, that we don't have control over the revenue that comes in, but we do have control over our expenses. And so Craig and his team, all of our department heads and executive directors, our expenses were less than what we had budgeted. And looking through every department, they really monitored what the expenditures were and spent the taxpayers' money wise to make sure that our fund balance went up to $122,999,999. We all are going to contribute, for the, the four of us that are here, 25 cents to be able to get that to 120, each, to be able to get that to 123 million even for general fund. But that's, that's a big number. I, I think when it first started, our general fund was in the 20 million range, and, and now to see that at 122 million or 95% of our operating budget, that's a huge deal for the taxpayer. So thank y'all for reporting these numbers to us.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you next year.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll move to Brinkley Road Change Order Number Two. Ms. Emerson?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I bring to you for approval the Brinkley Road Improvement Project Change Order Number Two. This change order is the addition of bridge drains to be added to the construction contract. During the construction of this project, it was discovered these items were needed and not included in the original quantities for the job. A total of 11 drains will be installed with this addition, six in the Phase One deck and five within the Phase Two parapet wall. The amount of this change order is $3,667. This change increases the construction amount to $3,859,457, which is in, within the project budget.
Any questions for Ms. Emerson?
If there are not, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second, Mr. Blomley, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you. All right, we'll move to item 10, Butler Drive Right-Away Acquisition.
Okay, the next item I have for you is the acquisition of right-of-way for the easements for Butler Drive Realignment Project. A combination of right-of-way slope easements and drainage easements and temporary construction easements are required for... easements are required for from a total of six parcels for the realignment of Butler Drive. Staff has requested the appraisal appraisal services for five or six of these parcels. Actual negotiations for the needed right-of-way and easements are pending. If agreements are not reached, staff recommends proceeding with condemnation after appraising the property and depositing the appraised values in court. The cost of these appraisal services is $30,000, which is within the project budget.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chalklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to Resolution 23R03, agreement between TDOT and the city for South Church Street Bridge over CSX Railroad.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate you being here. TDOT is currently in a right-of-way phase for the replacement of South Church Street Bridge over the CSX Railroad. The existing bridge was built in 1928 and scored a 48.9 out of 100 sufficiency rating. The age of the bridge, along with the sufficiency rating, has spurred TDOT to replace the bridge. The new bridge will be an arch-type bridge with a tunnel for the railroad that supports an additional rail, as well as increased in height clearances over the rail track. The bridge will consist of the same five-lane cross-section with four travel lanes and center-turn lane along with curb and gutter and sidewalk. I'm available for any questions. And just based on their information, it is, construction is not programmed in their FY '24, which is from October 30 or October 1 of '23. It may be programmed a later date, but right now, it's current, the construction is is not programmed to go to letting.
Any questions for Mr. Kerr?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chalklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to Resolution 20R03. This is the agreement between TDOT and the city for South Church Street State Route 10 Bridge over CSX Railroad. This is our resolution for the right-of-way acquisition and for the proceeding.
Is there any questions?
Move for approval.
That would be what you just voted on, isn't it?
No, we we voted on the right-of-way acquisition, correct? Excuse me, I'm sorry. No, that's correct. Yes, we just voted on Resolution 23R03. I apologize. Thanks, Jim.
Yes, sir.
All right, now we need to move Cherry Lane Phase 3 supplement request for right-of-way annexation.
Yes, sir. On April 8, 2021, the city entered into a professional service agreement for right-of-way acquisition services for Cherry Lane Phase 3. During the right-of-way acquisition phase, it was determined that relocation was needed for Track 44 rather than a partial acquisition. The fee for the additional relocation of Track 44 is $6,250. This has raised the contract ceiling to $378,250. The expense is funded 80% federal, 20% local, with local funds coming out of the 20 or the 2019 budget, our CIP budget. Available for any questions?
Any questions? Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chalklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll now move to Bradyville Pike Reconstruction Supplement Request for Right-of-Way Acquisition. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you. On November 1, 2018, the city entered into a professional service agreement for right-of-way acquisition services for Bradyville Pike. During the right-of-way acquisition phase, it was determined that additional or restarts of offers and negotiations was needed for seven tracks. The fee for the additional seven tracks is $21,000, which is the unit price included in the contract. This would raise the contract ceiling to $471,000. The city has already met its obligation for this phase of the project. Therefore, this expense is funded 100% by federal and state funds. I'm available for any questions.
That's easy. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chalklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. All right, we'll move to board and commission appointments. Unless I'm missing something, we don't have any board and commission appointments.
There are no board and commission appointments. We do have some beer licenses tonight. We have four regular permits. One's a restaurant with an ownership and name change at 1935 South Church Street, a market with an ownership and name change at 235 North Rutherford Boulevard, and two new locations for a restaurant and coffee shop at 2412 East Main Street and a restaurant and bar at 124 North Maple Street. All applicants have met met the requirements for a permit and are recommended for approval pending building codes, final inspections.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chalklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any other business, or excuse me, any statements to be paid?
There are none.
Okay. All right, we'll move to other business. We have several items. Master Services Agreement for Low Voltage Cabling Services. Mr. Jarrett.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. IT is requesting approval for the attached master agreement with this Land Link Communications for Low Voltage Cabling Services. This agreement is pending legal review. Through a competitive bid process, Land Link Communications was selected as the vendor that can best meet the needs of the city. Having a single vendor for installation and maintenance of our low voltage cabling will help maintain network consistency across city projects.
Any questions for Mr. Jarrett? Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chalklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. All right, we have additional items, repair of freeze damage to concession buildings, facilities, and maintenance.
Good evening. I hope you've all had a chance to review the council communication on this, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Hennessy? This is regarding freeze damage at several different park recreation facilities.
We think the total cost is 170?
Yes.
Is estimated, but insurance is paying it, right?
Yeah, we're, we don't have the exact insurance amount. That $140,000 estimate is both, it's a combination of in-house estimate along with the quote from New Creations.
Okay.
Just just to add some clarification on that, for the, under the city's fire and casualty insurance policy with travelers, there is a $100,000 deductible for for each instance, each occurrence. So, we have filed a claim with travelers. We're working through that, just documenting it. And so, the city will pay the first $100,000 out of the risk management fund, and the hope is that the, we will get insurance coverage for the amount above the $100,000.
Okay. Is is each park being considered an occurrence, though?
The, no, no, it's not. It's it's the the freeze event is is the occurrence.
Okay, so moved. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chalklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Thank you, Ms. Hennessy. All right, we're going to move to Murfreesboro Water Resources Department. This is an operations and maintenance vehicle purchases. Mr. Gore.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. We have three 2023 Chevrolet Silverado 2500 crew cab work trucks that we are desiring to to purchase. I don't know if you are in the in the know on this, but we are having significant issues on finding vehicles. And as soon as we do find them, kind of our normal 45 to 60-day process, people are coming in and actually taking those vehicles kind of out from under us. So, we're having to, when we find them, we're having to kind of bring them to you within about a 15-day period to secure those purchases. So, apologize for being brought up under other business, but it's one of those deals where we found them and we're trying to lock them in. So, I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Hey, Mr. Gore, I'm sorry. Pardon my ignorance. What does BQ2 mean on the Wilson County Motors? Price summary? Am I crazy? I, yeah, I have no idea.
Okay.
It's saying base price $43,000, MSRP $47. I'm just wondering, did we get a discount or?
Yeah, we're showing, my memo says we're getting for $38,513 each. So, that's right at the 100, what is that, 120,000 or so? So, I'm not sure if the quote, because the contract says the $38,513. I'm not sure, Kathy, if we know what the quote, if that's, it's just the dealer, that's that's maybe MS, the the sticker price that for for normal folks, or we are getting kind of maybe the the government?
Yeah, just.
State price. There you go.
Seems like a good price for a truck.
We get the clear coat?
It's, yeah, that's.
Series X, I think, or?
Own package.
Any questions for Mr. Gore?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chalklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, the next item, we have a WRF aerator 2A impeller replacement.
Yes, sir. I've got a slide if you want to see it, but this is a large impeller, about the size of a Volkswagen. We had a catastrophic failure. We have 16 of these aerators. This is one of those 16. And we have a purchase price for the impeller is 90, where am I at? Yes, 90, $96,42, and the cost with a task order for John Bouchard of $47,890 to actually do the work to replace it. So, the total cost is $143,932. Again, this is a, this this happened Monday and wasn't something that we we foresaw. So, we're asking for your approval for that purchase.
You sure you just didn't miss the deadline to submit all this stuff? Everything's awfully last minute.
Yes, I don't like giving you guys stuff last minute. Yes, the trucks, I thought that the truck, I was told by one group that the trucks could be held until I took it through the board. I was then told by another party that the trucks would not be held. So, that was that one. And the impeller was just, yeah, we had a huge impeller break.
It's a shame.
Sorry.
Well, Mr. Wright pointed out that we don't have a PowerPoint, so that's the benefit.
That shows you were rushed.
Under other business, I don't get to give you the pre-pictures, sorry.
Motion, and I'll second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chalklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Before you have ordinance 23010 to create a tennis commission, sent mo, I sent everyone an email on Monday. This is my top three longest emails that I've ever written as a council member. But it sort of gave you the background of, I know all of us have gotten lots of feedback. And so, Councilman Chalklet's wisdom, I think, always including the public. We've got a lot of people who are wanting to serve on that board. We met Monday. I think Sean popped in for that meeting, and a lot of good feedback. The ordinance very clearly defines that this is an advisory role, just like a lot of our boards. This is not operational. There's no hiring ability. Now, I I do think staff has always been very, Parks and Recreation staff has always been very good about collaborating with the board chair. It in the ordinance, it's, it asks for for me to name the board chair, that recommending that to be, it'll come at another, the whole commission will come at another date, but while we're here, Dee Jernigan was the unanimous pick of the entire board to be the the board chair. Dee served as the Parker Parks, on the Parks and Recreation Commission for 29 years. Councilman LaLance is remac, former Councilman LaLance is also recommended to be on that board. But I I, after listening to everything tennis for the last six months, I, there's not many things I'm confident about, but I 100% believe this is the right decision to make, to to put in the advisory commission in place to let them work through some of these things.
Agreed. So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chalklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Is there any other business from staff? Craig, do you have anything? Will we be meeting next week?
Next week, no, shortly.
Okay, that's right for President's.
Yes, sir.
So, the the city offices, I know Mike has put out a a press release, but Mike, the city offices are closed on Monday for President's Day.
Sure.
Okay. Council, do y'all have any other business?
Nothing for me.
Happy birthday, Jamie.
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.